Good evening. I call the October 20th, 2019 meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rock.
Here.
Mr. Weisman. Mr. Sims.
Here.
Mrs. Burdy.
Here.
This is Mayor. Mr. Erdel.
Here.
Mrs. Weiss.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Weisman and Mrs. Kenney?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Motion by Mrs. Burdy, second by Mr. Sims. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Burdy.
Aye.
Mr. Erdel.
Aye.
Mr. Weiss.
Aye.
Motion carries. Will all those who are able, please rise for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is the approval of the minutes. Kelly May, Mrs. Thomas Van Gaten, is distributed shortly before the meeting, but I know that due to computer difficulties, she was just finishing late yesterday, and truly, we did have computer difficulties these last two weeks. So if you all have not had an opportunity to review them, that is wholly understandable, and I would entertain a motion to table in the next meeting.
Mayor, I would like to table the minutes. I understand they were sent to us last night, and I haven't had a chance to read them.
Very good. There's a motion to table by Mrs. Burdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Burdy.
Aye.
Mr. Erdel.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Very good. It is from the last meeting, we'll be tabled in the next meeting. Next item up is comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes. There's a total time allotted for this period of 15 minutes per meeting, unless otherwise permitted by council. Is there anybody who would care to address the city this evening? I see Mr. Kevin Smalley. State your name for the record, name addressed for the record, and you have the floor, sir.
Kevin Smalley, 68, 96 Miller Road, Brooksville. With Illuminating Company, I just wanted to say thank you. I know we had a little bit of rough times in early September with the storm coming through. It's not always pleasant, it's not always fun, but you know, we do have the storm process. We work to try to get everybody back on as safely as possible. Just wanted to kind of reiterate what our process is and how we go about it. First and foremost is public safety. We go around, the longer a wire lays on the ground, the more potential for somebody to get hurt, somebody potentially die. We treat every wire on the ground like it's lives, you don't know if it could be backed back from a generator from the residence house, and 120 volts that it's producing is now up to 12,000 volts or 13,000 volts, it could seriously harm somebody. So if you see somebody coming in the neighborhood, you're out of power, looks like they're there for a half hour or so, hour, and then they leave, and you still don't have power, if it's admitting of storms, most likely you're there to cut it, put it, make it safe, and move on to the next hazard, so we can get all the wires off the ground as soon as possible, so nobody gets hurt. From there, critical facilities, police, hospital, fire stations, pumping stations, or nobody ever thinks about it until they don't work, and basements start flooding and stuff like that. And then from there, it's a numbers game. Largest circuit, largest amount of outage burst to the least. If you're the only person in your neighborhood that doesn't have power, unfortunately, you're probably away from that. Guess if we have a choice of putting one person back on, compared to a couple hundred people, we're going to work back getting a couple hundred people back on. With that, I know we had some tough times. You guys got hit just as hard as everybody else around the area. Is there any questions about the storm process? Any questions about anything else electrically related?
I don't necessarily have a question, but I do have a comment, and you know, just for the sake of everyone here and for the community, during the storm, and I think we all know which storm it'd be, Mr. Smalley was available constantly whenever I contacted him, whether I called him, whether I texted him, whether he texted back, or whether he called back. And sometimes when we text back and forth, and sometimes we realize phone calling would be easier. And there were emails, and there was information, and there were things that we were able to put out on social media, there were things that we were able to put out using our email list. We got word up to the community about what was going on. We were able to work as a conduit, so residents who had called the Illuminating Company but didn't necessarily know whether or not they're called and heated, they'd contact us, and I could pass along that information to Mr. Smalley. And people who were in compromised positions medically, or had extenuating circumstances that made outage much harder, we were able to pass along that information to first energy through Mr. Smalley, and I thank you for that, sir. So thank you for your dedication and your attention, and I don't know, people told me that they didn't think I slept much that weekend. I did get some sleep, I don't know that you did, though, so I appreciate everything you did from Friday all the way to Monday night. At least for this city, and I know beyond for some.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Smalley before he sits down? Thank you very much. We are still on the comments from the audience period. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening? Well, very good. I have to conclude that section of the meeting. Next up is reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action. The last two weeks have been difficult. While we approved IT services at the last meeting, our systems went down before the new equipment was here. The equipment arrived, and the work began to restore email, restore and virtualize the file server, and finally, to bring the accounting system back online. The accounting system was down from October 10th to October 21st. Fortunately, our IT consultants got it back up on Monday, and today was the first day that I happened to work without an outage of some sort for I don't know how many days, at least as many as those. I'm cautiously optimistic that this is behind us now, and I am way behind in responding to emails, and I ask the community, especially our residents who email me, for patients as I work for them. So with that unpleasantness reported, there is nevertheless much to be excited about. First, Dennis Kennedy is here in University Heights, former and distinguished finance director of Beechwood, Brooklyn, and Soul, former executive director of the Ohio Lottery Commission, and most recently, former fiscal officer of Kyle County County. In a few minutes, I'll be swearing him in as the next finance director of the City of University Heights. It is a big win for our city to bring in someone that's successful, accomplished, and dedicated, as Mr. Kennedy, someone as interested in our success as we are, our administration, city council, and the residents can have full confidence in his abilities and commitment. Next, I am excited by the first item on the agenda tonight, and I feel a merit of special mention. Since the beginning of 2018, your city government has been committed to redevelopment. That goes for everyone on our city council, that goes for the hardworking people in our administration, and that goes for me. We performed the City Beautiful Commission as the University Heights City Beautiful Corporation, making it a community improvement corporation, dedicated not just to the beautiful homes that we have, but to the mission of creating even more. We are about to make that happen. Tonight, we will vote on transferring three city-owned vacant lots to the University Heights City Beautiful Corporation to build three new homes, one on Ramon, one on Tullamore, one on Northwood. I wrote letters on behalf of the CIC to the neighbors of the lots to let them know the good news, and the response has been overall positive with some understandable but addressable concerns, including about the actual process of the construction, which we will meet with the neighbors about closer to when we break ground. But to be sure, these new homes are an investment in our city, in our neighborhoods. Ramon, and Tullamore, and Northwood all have beautiful homes on them already. With these new homes, we will enhance each street with homes that are high-quality and build modern in amenities, but outwardly exhibit the aesthetics and charm and style of the neighboring Neo-Colonia homes. They will add the value of the street to the desirability of the street, and demonstrate this city's commitment to our oldest neighborhoods. These streets are now more than good enough to buy into, to live on, and to plant roots, and now these homes demonstrate this city's confidence in that. And with each new home, every resident on that street, every resident to come onto that street may share in that confidence. I want to thank my fellow board members of the City Beautiful Corporation for their part in making that happen, Michelle Weiss, Mark Weisman, Sue Burdy, Susan Drucker, Patrick Rogen Myers, and Winifred Weiser. This is what happens when good people come together, united in common cause for the betterment of our community. Indeed, together, we are reaching new heights. Thank you. This concludes my report. So we have amended the agenda, amended the agenda, that is, to administer the oath of office for Finance Director Dennis Kennedy, so Mr. Kennedy, if you perhaps would like to go ahead. Mr. Kennedy, if you raise your hand and repeat after me.
Aye.
State your name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America. The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
And the Charter.
Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights.
City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As Finance Director of the City of University Heights.
As Finance Director of the City of University Heights.
So now we go.
So.
Congratulations. And now I amend. Motion to authorize the mayor to transfer the following city-owned lots to the University Heights City Beautiful Corporation. 3509 Ramon Boulevard, permanent parcel number 722-01-029. 3505 Tullamore Road, permanent parcel number 722-04-099. And 3761 Northwood Road, permanent parcel number 722-15-063. I would simply incorporate my remarks from my report, and if anybody has anything else to add, they may, or we may entertain a motion.
I just have a couple logistical questions.
Sure.
So this will transfer from the city to the University Heights City Beautiful Corporation. Now, if the project hypothetically did not go through, this could always transfer back in hopes of another project. So this will be held in the CIC until you know this successful project will start?
The way this will function is that when the developer tells us that their buyers placed money in escrow, we provide our developer, essentially, to transfer property. And that's when they assign a contract for distribution.
Okay.
So we typically get all that information from them. Mrs. Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, when the CIC was first created, we weren't exactly sure how everything was going to work, and this is really the first piece of legislation that has been transferred, or you know, actually, this is the first anything of substance that has, you know, occurred in the CIC. It's very exciting, and so we've made a setup in years before, you know, all my thoughts, so I'm very excited about this.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. Is there anyone else who may add any further?
It is exciting, Mayor, that we will have quality housing filling in where there aren't no houses now, so I agree with you, and we're happy to see this go forward.
Okay, Mrs. Burdy.
Now, I'll make the motion to authorize the mayor to transfer the following city-owned lots to the University Heights City Beautiful Corporation, the 3509 Ramon Boulevard, 3505 Tullamore Road, and 3761 Northwood Road, and permanent parcel numbers listed in the agenda.
Very good. We have a motion by Mr. Rock. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mrs. Weiss. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Erdel.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Item two, ordinance 2019-63, rezoning certain parcels located on Warrensville Center Road as follows, permanent parcel number 721-01-064, and 721-02-068 from U7 and U3 to local retail district four, U7. Mrs. Drucker, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. When we were looking to clarify the zoning map, we actually identified that two parcel owners, in particular, the ones listed in ordinance, are two parcels that were, at one time, they were two different parcels, they were consolidated to one parcel, yet they kept two different zonings, U7 and U3. The permanent parcel number 721-01-064 is the PNC building that is located at 2233 Warrensville Center Road, and 721-02-068 is owned by Spalding Leasing, that's where the annex is located at 2245 Warrensville Center Road. So what we wish to do is, tonight, I'm just asking you to refer to planning, but what we will be asking them to do is to make a recommendation to remove the U3 zoning, and therefore just leave the U7, which is local retail. This would not impact the current use on the property, be it the bank or the shopping center, where the offices and businesses are located at 2245. So this is just a way for us to clarify our zoning map, so that there's one zoning for one parcel.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Any questions for Mrs. Drucker? Mr. Rock.
Again, this is a logistical question. If the planning commission hasn't reviewed this yet, then what are we voting on?
No, it's to refer to planning tonight. I'm here to ask you to refer it to planning, go to the next planning commission.
So we're voting to refer it?
To refer, but also start at first reading.
We're not voting to change the zoning?
No, no, at the first reading, they'll make a recommendation to, hopefully, they'll make a recommendation to change the zoning to U7, and then bring it back to council for that final passage.
We're on first reading tonight.
First reading.
The zoning change has to be recommended back to council by planning, and council has to be, with that recommendation, that that's the process. Thank you for clarification. Any further questions or comments? I don't think so, it's the first reading, so I think I just. Well, we'd like to. Motion to refer. To refer. Oh, okay. Very good. Okay, we've.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to refer this to planning commission, ordinance 2019-63 by Mr. Sims, second by Mr. Rock. Any further discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Burdy.
Aye.
Mr. Erdel.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
This matter is so referred to planning commission. Can I just, one further point of clarification, I probably apparent to everyone, but just in case it's not, planning commission, we're here to resolve it, and for our code folks to notice that, the recommendation will come. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Next item is item C, ordinance 2019-64, rezoning certain parcel located on Warrensville Center Road, permanent parcel number 721-06-023, from automobile parking district U3 to local retail district four, U7. Mrs. Drucker.
Yes, again, with this part, refine our zoning map, we identified that permanent parcel number 721-06-023, which is the Mr. Tiger, is currently zoned automotive parking, which is U3, that means it's just a parking lot, which it obviously is not, it's a retail center. So we are looking to rezone this parcel to local retail district U7 to match its current use as well. Just to also note, not only for this ordinance, but the other two parcels, all property owners were notified, and I could speak to two out of three of them, and everyone was in support of moving forward with this. So property owners were notified prior to us bringing this to foreview. So again, I'm asking for referral to planning, and then to follow the same process.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Are there any questions for Mrs. Drucker? Any comments? Is there a motion?
Second.
This is just to clarify, for reference, a motion to refer an attitude of law and commission. I heard several motions. I'll go with Mrs. Burdy on the motion, and Mr. Sims on second.
Who's Mrs. Weiss?
Oh, was it Mrs. Weiss? Oh, you know, I thought I refused to, okay, all right.
That's okay.
Very good. Well, Mrs. Weiss then on the motion, and Mr. Sims on second. Any discussion on the motion?
I guess I'm just curious, how did you discover this? You were reviewing the map.
Oh, just when Patrick and I go through, we're looking at various zoning issues, and I have to say, Patrick is going to give us credit for flagging that one, and it just when we, when we're talking about various different things, when we're looking at the zoning code, we're just, we actually have probably five or six items we're totally looking at reviewing right now, and so we wanted, these were the low-hanging fruit, the easy ones, that we could do an easy cleanup. The others are going to be a little bit more complicated, because you're talking about possibly consolidating parcels to common ownership, that type of thing. So that's why we picked these three first, too, because they were the easy ones to clean up without, they were just easy, so, but I have to give credit to Patrick, he identified. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Erdel.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Drucker, and thank you, Mr. Rogen Myers. Next up is item D, ordinance 2019-65, enacting codified ordinance chapter 1490 of the Housing Code entitled Point of Sale Inspection and Healing, chapter 1474-10, chapter 1474-11, chapter 1474.09A1, and 1474.09A2. Mr. Rogen Myers, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So just about a year ago, the Housing and Community Development Department was created to really focus in on our housing stock and the city's approach to the housing code and enforcement of housing code. Part of what I've taken up in the last year has been a wholesale, ongoing review of our housing code. As you can imagine, throughout the years, as things have come up before council, there are some issues that have arisen, and one of the places that seemed logical to start was our point of sale inspection program. So I prepared a memo for you, I just want to walk through a few of the high points here, because there are really seven, what I'll call summary items, as part of the proposed amendments. The first is, currently, the point of sale inspection program is nestled in the enforcement chapter of the housing code. It's tucked in with a lot of other provisions, it's not what I would describe as user-friendly in trying to find it. So the first is kind of an administrative piece of just separating it out into its own chapter, and clarifying what provisions apply directly to the point of sale inspection program. So that's this creation of the new chapter 1490. Currently, it's housed in 1474. The second piece is, again, an administrative touch of changing the department responsible from the building department to now the Housing and Community Development Department. Currently, you know, we've been working hand in hand with the building department, they've been great through the transition, but formalizing that it's the Housing and Community Development Department seemed also to be an appropriate amendment to the ordinance at this time. Additionally, there were a few items that we are clarifying as part of these proposed amendments that reflect current practice already. For example, clarifying that the point of sale inspection is not required when a property transfers as the result of an inheritance, or it's transferring for no money within a household. It's not practical, and it's also inappropriate given the nature of the transfer that's taking place. It's not an arms-length transaction, we're not seeing, you know, the changes in occupancy that we might see in an arms-length transaction. And also, there's another piece requiring that when a business entity, whether foreign or domestic, is involved in the transaction, that they have to be a registered entity here in the state of Ohio. We've actually come across one where that was not the case at the time of sale. So again, putting some best practices in place as well in part of these changes. Now, there are two that might more directly impact the public interface as it comes to the point of sale inspection program. The first is that the point of sale inspection program is unique in that when we issue a first notice, we give 30 days for the compliance time period. So all violations, whether two or 40, we give a 30-day compliance for the first violation notice, and that's because it is filled out specifically in ordinance. Now, we don't necessarily have a problem with that, except that what we've found is that 90 days is more practical. There's already a motivation for people to fix violations, because they're trying to sell a home, or there's a party who's willing to sign an assumption of violations form, saying, "I'm going to buy this home," works enough. "I'm going to buy this home knowing that there are some violations on the property, and that I've got to set up escrow and sign an assumption of violations form to allow the property to transfer." So changing it from 30 days for that first violation notice time of compliance to 90 days eliminates some unnecessary hassles on the part of the seller of the property, as well as eliminates some administrative oversight, where we're just creating additional paperwork, where we've seen greater success in that first 90-day period. So just kind of codifying something that's been standard practice over the years. Then, the one that, you know, I struggle with, but as a department director, I'm responsible for making sure that we're collecting fees in accordance with the cost to administer the program. In conducting an analysis of the cost as it relates to this program, as part of the proposed amendments, it does include an increase in fees of $100 per inspection, meaning if you've got a single-family home and you're getting point of sale inspection, currently it's $150, the proposed amendment is to move it to $250. For a two-family home, it is currently $200 for the point of sale inspection fee, this proposed amendment is to move it to $300. So this moves us from approximately a 60% fee to cost ratio to approximately a 93.5% fee to cost to administer the program issued. So looking to balance this program a little bit better than it has been over the years, just at the fees that have been set. The final thing in working with the mayor is looking at the tiered structure for our release of escrow funds. So part of what we've done is built in something that talks about, based on the amount of escrow funds, which correlate to costs and size of violations, building in a tier so that you can have more drawdowns on those escrow funds as the amount of escrow funds increases. So it creates a tiered system, where currently, as the ordinance is read, you could have one partial release up to $5,000, or, excuse me, if you had an escrow amount that was above $5,000, you could have one partial release of those escrow funds, but not to dip below $5,000 until you had all the violations taken care of. So if you had escrow funds in the amount of $20,000, you had one partial release that could draw, you could draw down to $5,000, and then you had to complete the rest of your violations before you could draw down that much $5,000. As we look at homes that require a little bit more upkeep and maintenance and correction of violations, as we're looking to promote investment in the housing stock, we're going to see those escrow amounts grow over the years, just because the amount of local power will grow as these homes continue to get older. What we wanted to do was build in a tiered system that recognized that, that allows for people who have these larger escrow amounts to have a few more drawdowns as it relates to the amount of escrow that you have. to the amount of escrow that you have set aside. So that's enumerated in the inspection language. It is based on $20,000 increments, so as it goes up, so for example, if the escrow funds are held, that are held at less than $5,000, there's no partial releases, whereas in the proposed amendments. But if you have escrow funds in an amount that's set between $20,000 and $40,000, this would allow for up to two partial releases, but not to dip below the $5,000 unless you completed all of your violations. So then, trying to gear these point-of-sale regulations to modernize them, and also allow greater flexibility for increased investment in the housing stock. Now, that's a summary of the proposed changes. One of the things that we have done, that is a little bit different approach to the legislative process, is that last week, we created a webpage on the city's website, where we put the proposed changes, the summary of the proposed changes, so kind of a summary that I gave tonight, the actual text, if someone wants to read through the entire text, and the financial analysis that helped us arrive at why these fees should be going up. We put all three of those on the city's website with a feedback form. So we've opened it up to the public, we want to be transparent about how we're handling this, and we went one step further. Last week, I also sent an email to the 15, either frequent flyer real estate agents, the real estate agents who are representing homes constantly here in the city, and we have several of them that we work with on an ongoing basis, as well as real estate agents who have come in recently. We sent an email out to them, knowing that they've got, you know, experience here in the community, we wanted to solicit their feedback. So we're reporting that feedback, and then we'll provide it to you as we continue to work through this legislation and consider it. So far, I've seen, I believe it's one day, two feedbacks so far. As of last Saturday, we had 52-page views, which are just the number of times people have been logging onto the page, and that's in an 11-day period, and that represents 19 unique people who have gone onto the website and viewed into. So just trying to provide that increased transparency and solicit feedback, we want to hear from the residents and the stakeholders about the proposed changes. So, this is on first reading, I know that Mr. McConville had sent last night some revisions or proposed provisions to the amendments, so this is on first reading, and we'll consider this kind of going forward.
The proposed revisions, for the purpose of consistency of defined terms throughout the ordinance, and then two main substantive points. One was to make it clear that any particular owner of a home is not under any legal obligation to consent to an inspection, and outlining the process that the city has to go through in the event that in order denies the city the right to inspect. And namely, that process is that the city can either issue a certificate to that homeowner, or can apply for an administrative search warrant with the municipal court, and argue that there's probable cause to suspect of their violations that are an inspection law. And then, secondly, I, with respect to the drawdowns that Mr. Gruben Myers was referencing, I wanted to make, I wanted to take those outside of the discretion of the director, so that when an individual owner is asking for amounts to come out of escrow, that there's a formula to apply to determine what the amount that comes out is. So there's language in those drawdown provisions that indicates that the amount that can be drawn out of escrow is the lesser of the amount that's spent on repairs, or the amount which, when subtracted from the gross amount in escrow, would leave a sum sufficient to make all the remaining repairs, so that as drawdowns occur, the city knows that it remains protected in terms of the remaining funds that are accessible to make those repairs. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gruben Myers, thank you, Mr. McConville. Are there any, well, I do have a comment perhaps before I turn it over. I do know that Councilman Wiseman, who is with us tonight, has been working with you on this, and he did email, when he emailed tonight to say you could not be here, he did bring up a couple of comments with regard to whether we could also shorten the 12-month period on sheriff sales before it was asked to be put, and there was one other item. Do you remember what the other item was, Mr. Gruben?
I do not recall. I did see his email, so I remember we were reviewing that as part of the proposed amendments, that we need to make some changes.
Yeah, there was a, there was a, I remember the comment was akin to, he noticed that something was seemingly eliminated, and he wanted to confirm that was the case, and it was less support. So, given the work he's given and done here, I don't know that we need to refer this to the building committee or not. I sent him a message asking if he wanted a referral, and I did not hear back from him. I don't know if we need to express the state that here, or if we can work that out before the next meeting, and if so, we can then have it go to building, or if with that adjustment, he is satisfied as the chair of the building committee, whether we can simply put it on for second reading at the next council. So, at the same time, if there are members here of that committee or otherwise who have strong feelings about whether it ought to go to committee, because there's other things they want to discuss, well, we can simply say that we will refer it to committee and ask Mr. Wiseman to schedule something forthwith to the council. Okay. Well then, so then, unless Mr. Wiseman finds that he would like to have committee on it, then I'm going to suggest we send it on for second reading at the next council meeting, and then follow-up on the amendments, two things proposed on Mr. Wiseman. Any further discussions? Yes, Mrs. Cameron.
Young man, is there, have there been any responses at all that you've received from the real estate people?
Yes, I believe there were one or two comments that have already been submitted, I was waiting towards the end of the week to gather those and send those off to you, just trying to avoid multiple emails and the input getting lost, rather I prefer to aggregate it at the end of the week and send it off to you. So I will commit to having that done by Friday. So, but like I said, I think there may be one or two real signatures to it providing feedback, and they've had it for, I believe it's a week now. But I did like them to know that this is going through two readings, you know, so there's a month or so that they would have time to consider the proposed feedback.
Yes, Mrs. Bur.
I just have a comment. Thank you for the work that you've put into this, cleaning this up and thinking so carefully, also trying to right-size the fees, for example, but I'm especially impressed with the process, making this transparent, getting it up on the website and having feedback. And I hope that that is a process that will follow as we go forward with future changes, but that's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bur. Are there questions or comments? Well then, we will consider this first reading to be had. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gruben Myers. Next item on the agenda is item E, motion to hold an executive session immediately following this regular meeting, the purpose of discussing personal, legal, and real estate matters, I believe you ought to have a personal discussion. And I'd ask that we get an executive session on that, a satisfactory motion, in time to hold that executive session at the conclusion of the regular portion. Got motion, Mrs. Cameron, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss. Now, Mrs. Thomas, if you can hold on.
Mr. Ratt.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Purdy.
Aye.
Mr. Erdel.
Aye.
Mrs. Weber.
Aye.
Very good. We will hold that session, then. We will now turn to reports. By tradition, not to ambush him, first report of the day in finance. Mr. Kennedy, is there anything you'd like to say for yourself?
After one day, everything so far is okay. I have compiled a list of things that the folks in the finance are really happy with, standard things when you go into a new place, particular municipality, of all the collective bargaining agreements, the healthcare contracts, the depository agreements, banking agreements, any kinds of policies and procedures, so I have a pretty extensive list that they're in the process of coordinating and giving me that information. So, once I get that, and also, I work on this system, I've worked with this system about 10 years ago, it's been upgraded since then, so it's going to take me a little time to get up to snuff with the technology, but I think it'll be a pretty quick read, and look forward to producing some financial reports that are readily accessible and readable by the residents of U.C.
That would be most of all. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy, he's been here a day.
I don't have a question, Mayor, but I just want to reiterate what you said at the beginning of the meeting, relative to Dennis joining the city. His reputation is actually real large, and we are really fortunate to have him at this time. I hope he proves, and I believe that he is the right person for the right time, and we really need his health, his experience, so I am really happy that he is on the road.
I couldn't have said it better myself. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Yes. And, Anne, it looks like you want to say something. Mrs. Anne.
I just want to ask him, that before he digs in too deep to put my name at the top of the priorities, is.
Okay.
As I was in town, some 31st, so I'll say sayonara, and I hope that you agree.
Certainly, Mr. Kennedy. I'm sure you will.
All right, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mrs. Cameron. All right, if there's nothing further, we'll turn now to Director of Law, Mr. McGonagall.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to report to council on our recent BZA hearing, in particular, the property of 2115 South Taylor, which is the old KFC, owned by Mr. Ayong, had an appeal before the board on the issues of public nuisance and the order of demolition. The BZA found that public nuisance conditions existed both with respect to matters cited by the building department, and as to the environmental condition of the property, and upheld the public nuisance determination. They also upheld the order of demolition, but stayed that order pending submission by Mr. Ayong at the next BZA hearing of the schedule for remediation of the building department, nuisance and environmental nuisance. Mr. Ayong, the other team of my folks with him, including legal counsel, engineer, environmental consultant, and architect, who are all provided testimony and information about his plans to redevelop the parcel, and on that basis, the board was willing to entertain the schedule for remediation. So, he would have 30 days to appeal the board's decisions on the public nuisance finding and the confirmation of the demolition order. We believe that time period will always work for the city. So the city's law position to hold it to a timeline agreed to by the BZA, if you can meet that timeline to take the proper steps to to reduce the burden.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Are there any questions for Mr. McConville? I see none. Moving right along, public safety, we'll start with Police Chief Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I've reported on three items tonight. First is regarding community engagement. On October 10th, I had the opportunity and privilege to put on the public safety presentation for senior citizens at the library. During this event, we had some help with two-way communication as well as information sharing, and will help us to gather efforts ahead for these resources as possible. Next item is regarding parking complaints. As you're aware, there's been some way occurring concern about parking on burning road near Cedar, that identified through a conference through the audience. As a result, since then, we've conducted 24 parking enforcement details in the area burning near Cedar, between the dates of October 9th and October 21st. During that time, four verbal warnings were issued to vehicles, and these vehicles were then removed by the drivers. Three citations were issued for no parking here to corner, and eight citations were issued for the prohibited time violation of the delocation, which is any rate of six minutes. And we'll continue to monitor that location going forward in the upcoming hours of public safety. Last item to report on is related to our police radio communications network, begin to explore a possible migration to is known as a high-band radio frequency to enhance our regional communication interoperability capabilities. This topic is going to be for discussion at the safety committee meeting, and we'll be prepared to provide more information on it.
That concludes our report. Very good. Thank you, Chief Rogers. Are there any questions for Chief Rogers? Mrs. Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I have two questions. One was, I guess, in the last couple days, there was a car at Elmdale Runway that was trying to pick up, so I'm trying to, is I recording to you?
I can't speak on that at this time.
So, I was looking to, I saw it posted on one of the social media platforms, so I didn't know, I told them I'm reporting to the police, I don't know what to do. Actually, yeah, still, I actually haven't answered one to you, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. To Chief, any further questions for Chief? Seeing none. Thank you, Chief Rogers. Next up is the Department Chief, Pergo.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Over the last three consecutive weeks, our department's been doing a regional training drill with the police department, John Carroll's police department as well, in conjunction with our medical control providers, university hospitals. This is training that is based on response to active threats, particularly into a school building. So we have been reviewing some of the history of past responses to these active threats, some of the history involving it, how to respond to a communications involved with it, as well as a concept called Rescue Task Force, where police migrates in with fire into some of the hazard zones to start treating those that are wounded. Police and fire have both been trained in what is called tactical emergency casualty care, treating some of these types of incidents from people that are victim to it. And then lastly, we started some small-scale drills, actually going through different types of rooms and classrooms in buildings, and there'll be a lot more to come, but this is kind of a kicking-off point for the three agencies to come together and start working together. So, I'm happy to report that we've been doing that with not only our own police department, but with John Carroll, they were gracious enough to host the Training Site for us. And last, one of the items that we had at our open house event was a coloring contest. This was for three different age groups, that the winners would receive a ride in the fire truck either to school, if they were a resident, or just as a tour of the city if they were a non-resident. So we've received those, and we'll be reviewing them in the next seminar soon.
Thank you, Chief Pergo. Are there any questions for Chief? Thank you. Next up is Service Department, Mr. Corney.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I was just going to report on three items. First, leaf collection, that has started as of the 15th of October. We have already completed two cycles around the city, getting every street. We are currently working on the third cycle, and as leaves come down, we'll add additional crews and try to keep up with it. Tree planting is scheduled, we will be selecting the trees for the tree planting project at the end of this week, and that will start probably the first week of November, and should be completed during November. We have about 135 trees, including the additional trees for the Currently, we're expecting a bid opening on November 1st for the tree pruning project, which will go throughout the winter. That obviously has lots of trees to it and I hope to bring a recommendation of a low bidder to council on November 4th.
Mayor, you did. Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Next up is Building. Will Commissioner Jim McRae, Mr. McRae, you're the one?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Next month, the ARB and the BZA will be holding their meetings at the regular time, but the Planning Commission meeting has been rescheduled from November 7th to November 21st. Next, I'd like to report on permit income. Permit income for the month of September in this year was $8,330.40. This compares with permit income for the same period last year at $6,955.21, increase of approximately $1,400 over last year's. Next, I'd like to report on complaints regarding the business located at the corner of Vernon and Cedar Road, known as the S.A.S. Because of the complaints that were mentioned here at the council meeting, building department has been following up on this on a daily basis. We've had numerous conversations with the owner of the business. We have cited him for trash, and then a second notice, and we had a conversation. The owner explained to us that the trash trucks, the ones that come in to pick up from the trash dumpsters, are having a difficult time coming into the area where the dumpsters are behind the building because the aprons are damaged. Based on that, we sent a notice to the owner of the property to replace the apron, which he did. And the owner of the property, of the business, I'm sorry, the owner of the business agreed to increase his pickups and trash from two times to three times. On one occasion, while I was monitoring the site, I noticed that there was a representative from the county of Oklahoma Health also running in for it in the abandoned apartment. So, they've been under some scrutiny lately and I think they've responded. The parking area is much cleaner, the trucks are making their pickups regularly. And in addition, we had a complaint about the outside eating area, so they decided to discontinue use of the outdoor eating area until they got special permit from the Board of Design Appeals. And that was granted under certain conditions, which were very similar to the conditions that were granted subway years ago. Basically, that the outdoor eating area can be used until dusk or 8:00 p.m., whichever comes through. It cannot be left, it has to be kept clean, and they have to provide a landscaping plan to the building department, which is going to kind of hide the fence that's in there. And finally, November 18th, I will be attending a continuing education meeting in Columbus, sponsored by the Ohio Board of Building Standards regarding existing buildings.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. McGonagall?
Mayor, I don't have any questions, but I wanted to thank the city for following up on that particular property. Right after the original person testified, I took a trip there and I actually became a customer. I was shocked that the patronage was out the door, around the building, down the corner, and it's the success of the business that is the problem.
I expected success.
Well, maybe, probably they expected the success, but the facility, based on the level of business, was just too small, to be honest. And it was also the mention of restaurants, and so I did notice that they have a single restaurant. They also have a notice on the restaurant that says, "Not for public use." It doesn't say customer only, so I don't know exactly what that sign means, whether customers can use it or not.
Well, as I understand, since they're a carryout, they don't have to offer other restaurants. But that is not my research understanding, that is my general understanding, and I'm aware of other establishments that are similar that have either dosed seedings or just the scantiest seed. The seeding that is inside of the S.A.S. is taken not by people eating, but taken by people waiting for their food to take them to go. So, I don't believe that they-
So, it's a carryout?
Yes. So, I would encourage everyone to try to do this. And I have, and I- Coincidentally, the owner intends to put up three more franchise businesses based on the success of this first store.
So, is there any way we can suggest a larger facility for this person?
You can suggest.
Do we have anywhere to suggest?
We are so far, I guess, that's, we're not in a position to offer that. Anything else for Mr. McGonagall? Okay. to share briefly on his behalf, if you're wondering about paving on Cleveland, and for that matter, a little bit on Churchill, it needs to be redone, that is now scheduled to happen on Friday, this Friday. So, the manholes were replaced, catch basins were replaced, and now with those things done, the paving is ready to go and it'll simply be a matter of scheduling, paving contractor at his next, their next available date, which is coming up on Friday. Also, most of the tie-ins, except for eighteen, as of this morning, were done on Washington Boulevard, on that water project in the section of Washington Boulevard, Cedar. And with eighteen left to do, they should be done by early next week, and the paving contractor at this time plans to be there next Wednesday to pave Washington Boulevard by the Woodbrook Project, which was handled by Cleveland Heights, has been completed, including the five hundred and one feet that are in University Heights from the Cleveland Heights, University Heights line to Cambury Road. So, that is a maybodrom development to see that back real and that would be the substance of what Mr. Tunity had to offer this evening if you were here. Moving right along, then we have Communications and City Engagement. It'll be Mr. Perkins, you have the choice. You mean Mayor, Council?
I have three items to report. First, the issue of, the third issue of NSE will be hitting mailboxes in locations all over town in the middle of November. It goes to the printer, I believe, on Fridays. I've been proofreading it, and the mayor and I will pick up a little more than a scope at tomorrow before I go over to Cleveland, to make sure that, you know, everything's all lined up, and this will be the third issue in a row without any typos in it, so we're looking hard at that, and again, we'll be looking forward to getting that in the middle of November. Second item, also in the middle of November, will be the Civic Awards. Tickets are on sale now. The event will be on November 13th at 6:30 at the Jardine Room on campus of John Carroll University, same place it was last year. Tickets are available on our website for just $25 to get the full meal and you get the awards ceremony hosted by Gabrielle Cruz. And while we won't have the extensive swag bag that we had last year, we, everyone who is in attendance will receive the University Heights new logo scarf. Since tickets are, thank you to Edwardine, the intern, who spent a lot of time working on this, and since tickets are on sale now, and we have present this evening, the first person to buy a ticket, Ms. Sheri Dor. This is for you. I said, "Don't ask for a second one." You can wear that around town, and where'd you get the scarf? Well, I got it, and you can get it too.
What happened on the website?
There you go. And finally, third item is, this is Red Ribbon Week, and what Red Ribbon Week is, it's schools have educational programs to promote drug awareness and, you know, keep students off drugs, and JSU is doing an event, and Prosecutor Stephanie's Police will be speaking to students on Friday afternoon. I'll be taking along to that event and we'll get some pictures and or video of that, so that'll be on Friday, and I'll report back to you about that at the news meeting, we'll also put some information on social media. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Are there any questions for Mr. Perkins? Very good, thank you. Waiting for someone to ask. Twenty-five dollars. Next up, Economic Development, Mrs. Perkins.
Thank you. I completed my quarterly review last month of our available properties, so to answer Mrs. Yaman's question, other space, one of the good problems we have here is we only have a 5.3% vacancy rate in retail, that's excluding University Square. So, the regional average right now is 10.2%, so we are considered to be in a very healthy market as far as office and retail. That being said, we only have a handful of locations, retail spots that are left to be, that could be occupied, so that limits people's choices when they want to move their business in. But there has been an influx of calls for three of the locations, two for the Veterans Sillsby Center, one that is vacant and one that will become vacant in a month, so they're already looking to have that filled for, at least have a tenant leased out to somebody prior to the current tenant leaving. Secondly, we're going to be, we have started our, getting our businesses lined up for our Small Business Saturday, that will take place on November 30th this year, that is the Saturday following Thanksgiving, and we expect to have approximately thirty-five businesses participating in that event this year as well.
All right. Any questions for Mrs. Perkins?
You mentioned you were using zoning code with Patrick before. Has anything moved in terms of, you know, locally?
Well, this might be a little premature, but that was one of, I was hoping to possibly make that one of my budget requests this year, is what we've been identifying is we're trying to look at things that we can address, just Patrick and I, as we look at the zoning code. Just to give you an idea, some of the things we're looking at currently are non-conforming uses. Patrick's been focusing on an openly district over by Cedar Taylor, so there's redevelopment there, as you know, we have a vision over there on that corner. I just reviewed my first draft of writing the home-based business ordinance. I reviewed it with the mayor, he gave me some input, so I'll have to, I'm taking those suggestions back, I'll make some changes prior to, but I was hoping to bring that by the end of the year to council. We're looking to eliminate U3, that is the parking lot. It's automobile parking, so it's basically parking lots that are throughout the city, and how that actually came about was through Pizza Bogo, and then we noticed they had to consolidate their properties, they had U3 and U7. That's when Patrick started digging in and locating where are all the U3s and why do we have this district? So, that's what led to the three parcels that we talked about and the two pieces of legislation tonight. So, U3, we're looking to eliminate that, and then of course, possibly bring back the Parks and Recreation that Patrick presented probably about two or three months ago. So, I do feel that we do need a comprehensive update of the zoning code. We are, it's definitely outdated, and that's where we're coming into, when we deal with property owners, we're seeing that there's parcels that are crossing two, you know, they're crossing property lines, and we have buildings, for example, on Cedar Green, that has two different zonings, the building's cut in half, meaning the front and the back of the building have two different zoning codes. So, there's, it's, we're, as I said today, we're trying to hit the low hanging fruit right now, but we truly do need a comprehensive update, but I know that's a big ask in budget because it, to really do it the right way, it could be costly. And even though work has been done prior, we are now looking at six years, that initial work being out from when it was just, they hadn't even had public care yet back then, so I think we probably might start all over. So, we're just trying to address when we come across a zoning issue, we're either looking at potential development ideas, if we come across something, if we can clean it up, that's why we've been doing that, even though it's bringing it piecemeal, so to speak, but at least we want to address when we come across something, rather than say, "Oh, yeah, that's a problem, we know it's a problem, but we'll get to it when we do a zoning update." So, this way we can bring some of the things forward to you that we think, even though there's a comprehensive update, fees would be inclusive and it wouldn't be injuring them. So, something like non-conforming uses, we've discovered through our discussions, that could lead to a few other, that could be a little bit more complex, so that might be one, we wait for a complete zoning update to address that and get a planner's perspective on that as well, because there's so many issues that go with non-conforming issues, whether it's restoration, continuation, extension of non-conforming uses, and then that's where we fall into consolidating under common ownership. So, that was a little more complex, so that's how we've been addressing it.
Quick question. I haven't been back there in a while, but a while back, I was back there for the Tuesday business, I don't know if you think of it or-
Yes.
What's going on back there?
That is, so Goodwill is coming in there in the existing spot, but they're also taking the two vacant spots that were right next to it, so they're actually taking three units over in Cedar Center South. That is, the plans came in a couple of weeks ago. I know building and fire prevention have been, they're in plan review right now, and that, I know their goal for Goodwill is to be open approximately spring.
Is it a resale?
It's resale, yes. Donations and resales, but they are taking three old units back there. So, that would actually complete the back part for those vacancies over there, so, but that's what's happening in that location.
There's a, I mean, I don't know if you've been to the Goodwill resale store in Mayfield, but there are a lot of John Carroll students who go on their Mayfield shop for that particular Goodwill, and the fact that we have a population here that travels that far to use that particular facility, and one noticed by the way they're excited to get into this community, to be closer to a demographic that they serve.
And it will be a complete renovation, interior renovation of all three of those buildings together. It's going to be a big project.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Perkins. Next up is Housing Community Development, Mr. Ripley Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to report tonight, first, thank you for approving the transfer of parcels. We'll continue working with the developer to help them work through our meeting schedules, our approval processes. We've had extensive discussions with them as part of this development agreement and working with the CIC, so we'll continue to do so to help those projects move along. Secondly, I just received the Heritage Home Program quarterly report, so this is the third quarter between July and September of 2019. They saw an uptick in inquiries in 2019, third quarter, from forty-five, up from 29 in 2018 over the same period. For site visits, they saw a double, doubling of those from 26 this year compared to 13 last year, and they're also doubling of the loans signed to this year in the quarter compared to what last year. So, seeing some healthy improvements by metrics provided to the heritage- same period. For site visits, they saw a double, doubling of those from 26 this year compared to 13 last year. And there also a doubling of the loans signed to this year in the quarter compared to what last year. So, seeing some healthy improvements, biometrics provided to the Heritage Home Program. We're also seeing, year-to-date, we have a little over $300,000 in loans signed compared to a little over $116,000 last year. So, I'll be sure to send those statistics to you, but I just want to report those out, that those are some strong numbers. We're seeing continued investment in our housing stock, and I'm happy to see that. The third item to report is that after a long probation period effective December 2nd, that's Monday, it will be going live in-house with CitizenServe, our new co-enforcement software. So, that will go live in-house December 2nd, with January 1st of 2020 going live with the citizen or the resident facing portion of this. So, and this is for the Housing and Community Development Department, so any of the programs, the housing, excuse me, the rental license, vacant building, will also have plenty of sale in there, so those will be possible requests, as well as door-to-door and complete inspections that we'll be handling in Citizen Serve. I know it's been a long road, but it's been something that's been great for us internally to help update our processes, streamline them, and really try to focus on how best are we serving the residents in doing so in a quick and efficient manner. So, it's taken a little while to get us there, but we're much better for the process. So, we thank Citizen Serve for helping guide us through this conversation, and so Housing and Community Development Department looks forward to rolling that out.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Robert Myers. Any questions for Mr. Robert Myers? None. Thank you, sir. Okay, that turns us now to council standing committees. First up is building, Mr. Weiss. Is anybody got a report from the building committee? Seeing none. Civic information, Mrs. Kennedy. Thank you. Finance, Mrs. Pardy.
Thank you, Mayor. We're excited to welcome Mr. Kennedy on board, who'll be talking about getting the budget process that you've been running. Now, we're forward to introducing you to our bylaws and vibrant citizen financial advisory community, who will be able to help with that process. We'll be talking.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Pardy. Government affairs, Mrs. Weiss. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Recreation, Mr. R.
No report, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Mr. R. Safety, Mr. R.
No report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. R. Service utilities, Mr. Sims.
We did meet recently, I believe it was like on September 18th, it was about a month ago, and it was a great meeting there, I suspect, for the auto worker. So, we'll convey some additional information to the consultant, and we'll be there.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sims. And I would like to have a call, Mrs. Pardy.
No report, ma'am.
Okay, no report. All right. Well, this exhausts the regular portion of this meeting. We will be going into executive session shortly. When we exit executive session, we will return to this room to entertain motion adjourned. I do not anticipate that there will be any additional business working on, on that return. So, while you are welcome to stay, I don't believe we'll see anything but a motion adjourned if you stay. So, I thank all of you for being here as always, and we will recess briefly to allow us to continue executive session and probably go through the process. So, we are recessed for executive session. Thank you all for being here. Have a great evening, and see you in the next meeting. We'll see you in the next session.